Alright. So, still study day. Make sure you guys feel ready for the test. Someone's already asked about chapter eight quiz, did they?
Chapter nine.
Chapter nine, alright. Let's take a look.
Scratch, which one?
Eight.
Okay, three ones. What would you like to load up first?
Chapter nine please.
Chapter nine please. Alright. Chapter eight please.
That is what you're asking.
No. My brain is still not awake apparently, or my ears either, or. Chapter nine please. Alright, which one? Which ones is it?
Both twelve, that was in both.
Both, okay, let's take a look. Alright, now I'll admit, for one specifically, there's an issue.
Yeah, there's something you were talking about, how it didn't give you, are the air density different than what it should be?
Correct, so, just to, for those who haven't looked at this one yet, this is chapter nine quiz, question one and two. And question one is asking about the buoyancy of helium balloons. Helium floats in air because it is less dense than air, so the air is what is exerting the buoyant force on the helium. Someone mixed up my marker sort of system.
Also, I think you can erase that word. On the third one, you erase it.
What word? Oh, I mean, they rewrote it. This is what I told them not to erase, and they just removed it. So, buoyant force. Uh, first question is find the total buoyant force on six hundred balloons. To do that, you need to know pi r cubed, the volume of either one balloon multiplied by six hundred, or optionally just the volume of six hundred balloons. Since you're given the radius of the balloons, you would need.
Is this one of pi r squared?
It's actually four thirds pi r cubed, because it's the volume of the sphere, not the area of the flat circle. So that's one thing, and I do generally consider for homeworks and quizzes, the internet to be fair game, because you're doing it on a computer. I couldn't stop you if I wanted to, and sometimes Web assign just doesn't tell you certain densities and geometric formulas, so. On homeworks and quizzes, the internet is your friend. Volume of sphere, you can copy it down here if you still need it. You also then need density of air, since air is the fluid creating the buoyant force on the less dense helium. The helium balloon is submerged in air, so you would need air density. The problem is, this question does not tell you air density, so you would then think to look up air density. And when I do that, the first density I find is 1.225 kilograms per meter cube.
Wasn't it like eleven point eight?
One point one eight nine. I need to rework it, actually, because I don't want to be wrong. So this is the density that I found consistently when looking up air density, and when I worked it through with this, it didn't work. So let me real quick work backwards to figure out, to remind myself what density it is looking for. I think it's one point one eight.
I mean, that's actually less dense. Well, isn't it as you go up in the atmosphere that the density decreases?
That is true, yes.
So I'm guessing that it's recording the density of the air.
Oh, are you expecting?
Like, was the density of the air at eleven thousand feet?
Good, good point, let me actually check. Air density by altitude. I'm, uh, three point five, three point three hundred meters. Still don't think that's the pressure.
I was thinking density is point two nine seven eight.
Yeah, and instead, I'll work backwards here, five divided by six hundred balloons. That would be the buoyant force on one balloon. The volume of balloon. That's five point five one cubed. Volume of a single one. Six hundred cubed, so. Alright, the density of air that Web assign is working from appears to be approximately 1.290 kilograms per meter cube, which is actually more dense than standard air, which, if you're increasing in altitude, should not happen. So, it is just an unfortunate part of the question, and I'll have to see about rewriting it or replacing it, but since so many people have already done it, I'm not just going to take it out and deprive them of their points. Yes.
Is this the quiz or the whole?
This is chapter nine homework, so.
No, this is chapter nine quiz.
Sorry, chapter nine quiz, thank you. So if you have yet to do this one, or yet to complete it, you will need these two things to do it. Volume of sphere and the density of air this question appears to be working from. I've given this, like, I've showed this to a few people, they've worked it out with their unique numbers, and they've gotten the correct answer with it.
So we just have to plug in our values for the buoyant force, and that should give us the answer to A?
Well, the en, hold on. The answer to A is the buoyant force on six hundred balloons.
It'd be 1.29, like, for me, my radius is point fifty-five, and then my mass is point thirty-one. So I plugged in 1.29 times four thirds pi point fifty-five cubed minus point thirty-one times nine point eight.
No, this is just g, not mg.
Okay.
For part A, you don't need mass yet.
So then why don't we make it mg?
So this formula is for the buoyant force created by the fluid on the object submerged in the fluid. And the formula specifically is density fluid times volume of the object times g. And technically, it is mg, if I'm being honest, but it's the mass of the air, not the mass of the helium. Because density air times volume of the object, technically, you know, an object that is one meter cube would displace one meter cube of air. So this is also actually the volume of displaced air. So density of air times volume air is mass air.
Okay.
And then mass air times g would be the weight of the air displaced. And coincidentally, buoyant force is always equal to the weight of fluid the object displaces. So it is kind of mg, but it's the mass of the air, not of the helium balloon.
Okay, gotcha. And then I'll go do part B and part C.
Okay.
Can we do number two now?
Uh, yes. Different question.
I was wondering if you could walk through how to get F B, like, actually, I'm just doing.
Oh, part B?
Or no, part A, excuse me.
F B. Oh, to find F B?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, this is your formula for buoyant force, and all part A is asking is, what is the buoyant force on these balloons? So one could use this formula, you need the density of the fluid that the balloon is floating in. So the balloon is floating in air, and that's why you need air density.
Oh, so that's where you use the air density.
Correct, and you should, if you're doing it now, great, but if you're gonna do it later, copy this down for later, because this is not the density of air you find online. Volume object, you have to find the volume of a single spherical balloon, and then g, so, if I was, and I'll, I'll work it out with these numbers to prove that this works. I've already found here the volume of a single balloon, and then density of air, so, if I was to find the buoyant force on just one balloon, that'd be 1.290 times point five five six times nine point eights. So on a single balloon, I'd get a buoyant force of about seven point zero three newtons up. Not just one balloon, because we only plugged in the volume of one. The question mentions that there's six hundred of these things, and so for every single one, you're gonna add more buoyant force, and so you'd have to multiply this number by six hundred. Alright, must have been four hundred. And that gives me four thousand two hundred seventeen point four newtons. Uh, it's, it's close. Yeah, that's within the factor, that's within the range of rounding, and also note that it's in, the answer it wants is in kilo newtons. So, my calculator says four thousand, you have to divide that by a thousand to get four point, just to make sure that Web assign is happy with the answer. Is that helpful now? I'll mention part B real quick too, because part A is just finding the buoyant force. Part B is finding the net force on the balloons. So, the buoyant force pushes up, but while that is happening, the weight of all the balloons is pulling down. Now, if you're floating level unassisted, these two things are equal, but if they're not equal, you're either gonna sink if F G is bigger, or rise if F B is bigger. And since the helium balloons rise, F B should be bigger than the weight of all the balloons. But what it's asking me about, the net force, you wanna add the buoyant force you just found to the weight of all those balloons. So that would be the mass of six hundred balloons times g. I'll prove that works too. Four, what did I do? Four two one seven plus six hundred, mass of one balloon was point three three. And negative one eight. Nineteen forty point four. Yep, that's approximately what it's looking for. Weird to think that helium balloons have weight, but they do, and the net force upward is the buoyant force minus their weight, so they're really only shooting up about half as fast as they would if they were actually weightless. I guess you're only about number one before I open the floor back up. Any questions, any issues with number two before we go back up? Oh yeah, do you wanna look at two as well?
Yes, please.
Okay, so, two, weight of its atmosphere. So, just to reiterate, this is about standard atmospheric pressure on planet Earth. And that pressure is caused by the literal weight of our atmosphere pushing down on Earth's surface and everything on Earth's surface. So, Earth, cloud of air, kinda looks like a, when looked at two dimensionally, it almost looks like the sunny side of the egg. And Earth's atmosphere physically, literally, has weight, because it is made of mass. That weight is the force pressing in on Earth's surface, and it is acting over the surface area of the planet. Definition of pressure is force over surface area, so Earth's air pressure exerts force on Earth's surface area. And we are basically part of Earth's surface area, as long as you're living on the surface of this planet. So what it says here is, uh, so that is, the number is expected to use for pressure. Use the definition of pressure to find the weight of Earth's atmosphere in newtons by approximating Earth as a sphere of radius such and such, and surface area of the sphere, formula given there. So basically, you need to use this formula to solve for force, because the force is, the force causing this air pressure is the weight of the air. The weight of the entire atmosphere pushing in on Earth's surface. So this is the formula you wanna use, and the thing you're solving for is F. To get there, you gotta plug in the atmospheric pressure it gave you. It's slightly different than the number I usually use, but you should use the number it gives you, just because that's the number it's using. Leave F as it is, and then for area, you need to plug in the surface area of the sphere that is Earth. And that formula is four pi r squared. And for r, you need to plug in the radius of Earth listed there, six point three eight times ten to the sixth. And then you need to take that big number and square it.
So it's really big number.
Uh, yes, the surface area of Earth in units of meters cubed squared is a lot. In fact, whatever number you get here might actually be smaller than the reality, because.
Oh, actually, like, you.
Hold on, Earth is a perfect sphere. Because Earth isn't a perfect sphere, it actually kinda juts out at the equator for several reasons. So it's a little bit of an oblong.
Yep.
So, whether or not that number is correct, whether it's too big or too small, like, whether the area you get here is too big or too small, depends on if that is Earth's equatorial radius or its polar radius.
Obviously, I got a really big number, I don't even know if that enters Web assign.
Uh, for force.
Hold on, I see how it, I see how it is, that's it, so.
Yeah, the way that Web assign, it is possible to just input times ten raised to the number into Web assign, and it will understand, but it defaults to using lowercase e, like how your calculator will do.
Eight and eighteen.
Yeah, um, like eight, e, ten, for example. Sometimes it'll give you that weird, small uppercase E, it means the same thing, it's just short for times ten to the, but you should use the lowercase e on your keyboard, not uppercase E.
Call it, but this chapter can be.
Which I haven't taught you yet, so don't worry about it.
Yeah.
It's also not on the test, so really don't worry about it, yeah.
I have questions about the distance.
Okay.
Number five.
Um, I will, I think I made a mistake in my answer key on that one, and.
Oh yeah, it must be five point nine seven two, not the six point nine seven two.
Where? So the mistake might be, if your question's connected to that, I will go ahead and fess up. I made a mistake here, and I keep forgetting to upload an other version, which is on May. Now, it might not be what you're asking about, but I'll mention again to the whole room, the mistake I made is just when I was doing my own work and copying things from one line down to the other. You need the mass of the Earth, which is five point nine et cetera, and for some reason, I wrote six point nine et cetera. Which is my mistake. As a result of me making that mistake, my radius is about two million meters too big, and as a result, so too is the final height. So, this number should be about thirteen million meters, and this height should be about six point seven million meters, I think. So if you have questions related to that, apologize. Is that what you were asking about, or is there something else in your mind?
It's like, the math of it, how you get the equation, and how you isolate it, r from it.
Ah, yeah, sure.
I just don't understand.
Alright, so, uh, looking at the question as a whole real quick, we've got a meteor moving very quickly through space. It's going to get trapped by Earth's gravity and start orbiting the planet. And in space, orbit is caused. Meteor. All orbits are caused by gravity acting as a centripetal force. The meteor only orbits Earth once it gets to a certain distance from us, and then gravity becomes strong enough to force it into centripetal motion. Because whenever you have a centripetal motion, one object orbiting around some other point, there has to be a centripetal force causing it, so that's the F C here. And in space, gravity is acting as that centripetal force. And when one thing acts as another, you can literally just set them equal to each other. So in space, gravity is acting as a centripetal force, and that is just, this is how to say that in math. So, if it's an orbit question, which, there's one on the practice test, because there's gonna be one on the test itself, this is how you gotta treat it. If one thing is orbiting something else in space, keyword is orbit, the context is usually something moving around something else in space, moon, Earth, base station, Earth, something like that. Gravity's gonna act as a centripetal force, and since these two things are equal to each other, the formulas for those two things are equal to each other. So this is where you begin, uh, you could plug in universal law of gravitation in place of F G. You wouldn't want to use just m times nine point eight, because that only works on Earth's surface, and this meteor is hopefully not on Earth's surface, because that tends to extinctify dinosaurs. Uh, if you're not on Earth's surface, you have to use this to calculate gravity. And then on the centripetal force side, centripetal force is equal to mass times centripetal acceleration. And there's two different formulas for centripetal acceleration, I've just gone ahead and plugged in the one of those two that is relevant. Uh, if I was to try to step back a little bit, F G equals F C. F G is universal law of gravitation. And on your Google sheet, you can see that F C equals m times A C. So, gravity is gonna act as a centripetal force, centripetal force causes masses to undergo centripetal acceleration. Does that feel okay so far? Okay. Now, centripetal acceleration has its own pair of formulas. One of them is A C equals V squared over R, the other is A C equals omega squared times R. Which one you pick, which one you then plug in instead of A C, just kinda depends on what you know or what you want to know. In this particular question, we know the meteor's linear velocity, V, and we don't know omega, which means that the V squared over R version is gonna be more useful, because we already know V, and we don't have to find omega. So instead of A C, I went ahead and wrote in what A C is equal to, V squared over R. Does that help so far? Okay.
So, F C equals the mass times centripetal acceleration.
Correct.
Which also equals mass times velocity squared over the radius.
Correct. That's orbital radius, not radius of the planet, orbital radius from core to core.
Okay. So the orbital radius here would be, oh, we found the orbital radius in this question.
Yes, the first thing that I solved for here is orbital radius, because that is what the r in the formula is.
Okay. So, why do we know not to use the orbital radius above the Earth?
So, well. Okay, I'm gonna get there, let me just kinda step back up and get to that point. This is what I consider to be my starting point, and we're comparing gravity to centripetal force, because we know that gravity's acting as a centripetal force. And the thing we wanna know here is the distance between the meteor and the Earth, which means, basically, what we're after here is r. R is the unknown that we wanna know, we wanna know how far apart the two things are. If you're working for NASA, you'd be calculating this, because you wanna know what height is the orbit at, and or does it hit the planet? So r is what we're solving for, and the point of fact about both of these formulas, the Rs in both are the same thing. The same r, and they both stand for orbital radius, the distance of center of mass to center of mass, core of Earth to core of meteor. That's true for gravity, because gravity is affected by mass and the distance between centers of mass, not surface to surface, because your surface is on Earth's surface, and that distance isn't what you plug into the formula. What you plug in is distance from you to Earth's core. So the r on the gravity side is the distance of Earth's core to meteor's core, and likewise, on the centripetal force side, the r there is the same r, because what's centripetal force cares about is the distance between meteor's center of mass and the center of what it's orbiting, which is the center of the Earth. So it's the same r on both sides, it's the same variable, and on both sides, it is what's called orbital radius, the distance of core to core, not surface to surface. Now, if all I ask you for is orbital radius, you solve for r, and you're done. We need to solve for orbital radius right now to find what we eventually want to find, but the r here is orbital radius. If all you need is orbital radius, you solve for r, and you're done. Just wanna make that clear. So it's the same r on both sides, I take advantage of that momentarily. The other thing I'll point out is that there's another variable that's the same between both sides, and it's the mass of the meteor. On the gravity side, there's two masses, the mass of each object, because the mass of both objects affects the force of gravity between them. If both objects have more mass, there's a bigger force of gravity. So on the gravity side, the mass of both objects is present. So, on the gravity side, the mass of both objects is present, mass of the Earth and mass of the meteor. But on the centripetal side, only one mass is present. And you have to, for each situation, identify which mass belongs over there. The rule for what mass goes on the centripetal force side is it's always the mass of the object that is doing the orbiting. It's the mass of the object that is actually having a centripetal force act upon it. The meteor is orbiting Earth. The meteor is what's engaged in orbital motion. The meteor is the thing moving at this velocity. So, all of the data on the right side belongs exclusively to the meteor. Meteor's velocity, meteor's mass, distance from meteor's core to Earth's core. And for that reason, the meteor's mass is what goes here. And that's why technically you don't, I never actually listed a number for the mass of the meteor because you don't need to know it. If it's present on both sides of this particular set of equations, it just cancels out. So, I didn't even list a mass for the meteor because you don't secretly, secretly you don't need it. What this means is that any object of any mass would orbit at the same distance if it's moving at the same speed. Could be a meteor, could be a planet, could be a bus, if you somehow got one of those in space.
I'm trying to distinguish between R and then the height because I know the height is between Earth's surface to the meteor's core, correct?
Yes.
And then the radius is between core to core?
Yes. The R in the formulas is core to core orbital, orbital radius.
And the height is based, oh, I see. So, the radius, by you canceling out the radius, that's you canceling out the distance from the core to surface and just getting sort of this to core.
Correct.
Okay.
So...
Makes sense.
In retrospect, I kinda wish I'd asked first for orbital radius and then separately for height. Orbital radius is the more important of the two. Because orbital radius determines literally orbit. And this number, the whole orbital radius is what's in the formula here and it's core to core. That is different to height above the ground because to find height above the ground, you have to factor out Earth's physical radius. Because you are standing at an Earth radius away from Earth's core and then height is subjectively up from that point. Now, finding this R, big R, orbital R, is the most important part. That's the R that's in the formula. That's the R that's, the math is going to initially tell you. That's the part that gravity, that's the triple force cares about. So, these Rs, they're the same R each and they are orbital R. And since it's the same R, what I did here is, and I'll, I'll show this step now. Note again, the mass over here is the meteor's mass. It's gonna cancel out with its counterpart on the other side. I move this R squared over here because R's what we want. We eventually want it in the numerator. And since the R here is squared, I'm gonna move it into the numerator since it's got the bigger presence. I want specifically that R squared in the numerator. Since it's squared, it impacts the equation more. So, I'm just gonna show what happens when I move that over and nothing impulse. So, from here to here, all I've done is I've multiplied both sides by R squared and brought it into the numerator on the right. So, now the right side is mass meteor times velocity squared divided by R and then separately times R squared. So, what we got here is R squared divided by R. And it's the same R. So, anything squared divided by, again, itself, but not squared. So... R squared over R simplifies to just R. And that's why when I jumped from here to here, there's only one R left and it's on the right. Then I just sent everything that wasn't R over to the other side. Mass meteor would cancel out and v squared would end up on the bottom of the left. Do that correctly. Again, I wrote a six when I was not supposed to. It's supposed to be a five. Do that correctly. Six point six seven e, minus eleven, five point nine seven two e twenty, twenty-four, divided by five five zeros squared. The number you should get is thirteen million one hundred sixty-eight thousand thirteen point two meters. So, that is the orbital radius core to core. And again, that's the most important part. That's the part that this formula tells you. If all I ask for is orbital radius, you're done. Does that help so far? Okay. Now, the next part is just kind of context because the human brain doesn't really see this. You live on Earth's surface. Everything you see is kinda based on living on Earth's surface. So, the next part is what would the height the meteor be above the ground just for the sake of human context and also figure out it's gonna hit the planet? Because say we did this and we got a number that was less than Earth's physical radius. That means it's gonna hit the planet. Because that means it would try to orbit inside the planet and thus hit the ground to do that. So, if your answer here happened to be less than Earth's radius of six million three hundred seventy-one thousand, meteor hits the planet, send the evacuation notice. And then NASA scrambles to figure out exactly what the damage is gonna be, where it's gonna hit, who and how far do they have to evacuate, things like that. Yes?
I have a question about number seven.
Okay. Do you feel okay with this one for now?
Yeah.
Any issues here before moving on? I'll just point out real quick before moving on, just to address what the height number is supposed to be. Six... Seven nine seven... So, that is what the height would actually be if you put the right number up there. So, far enough away that it shouldn't bother us. But even if it doesn't hit the planet, NASA would still have to make sure we don't have anything orbiting Earth at that distance, like astronauts or satellites. Alright, seven.
So, when you're finding the force with the equation on the right, the impulse equals force times time, why did you square the, um, the impulse?
This?
Yes.
Sorry. That is not a square. That is the equal sign.
Oh.
Apologies. This is supposed to be impulse, which we know is negative ten point five, equals force times time. Sorry.
It's okay. Um, and for solving for impulse on the left side, why is forty-five negative?
Um, forty-five is negative because the ball turns around. Note that, and I didn't really specify positive or negative in the description, what you need to do is somehow indicate that the ball turns around when doing the impulse calculation because the ball starts, delta anything is always final minus initial. The ball starts forwards and if the batter is any good at baseball, ends going backwards. The premise of baseball is ball starts going this way, you hit it, now it's going that way. So, it turns around and that means that the two different velocities need to have opposite signs. You can decide that the thirty begins positive and that would make the forty-five negative, in which case you're gonna have negative forty-five minus thirty because it's final minus initial, which will give you negative seventy-five as the change. Alternatively, you could decide that the thirty is negative, but then the forty-five, opposite it, would have to be positive. So, then you'd end up with forty-five minus negative thirty, which is positive seventy-five. So, you don't strictly speaking need for the answer to be negative ten point five, but you do need to put opposite signs on the forty-five and the thirty such that the difference between them is seventy-five, not fifteen, because they point in opposite directions. It takes way more force to turn something around than it takes to just slow it down.
I have another question about six.
Six.
My last question. Um, for finding the angular acceleration, why is it zero for both?
It is zero because, and I could've done a better job actually writing this into the text. My intention is that this thing is rotating at constant speed. Because usually when you get on a ride like this, you start at rest, you get up to a speed and then you stay there until the ride's done. If you are rotating at constant speed, you are not angularly accelerating.
Say that one more time.
If you are rotating at constant speed, you are not angularly accelerating.
No change in speed, no acceleration.
Correct. You know, same as linear. If you're moving forward in a straight line at constant speed, your velocity, well, if you're moving in a straight line at constant velocity, I'm being specific, and that velocity does not change, you are not accelerating. I just kinda wrote zero on my answer key, but to prove mathematically what I mean here... Uh, for example, um, if we just use the definition of angular acceleration real quick, change in angular velocity over time. Part A, as you find, oh, that's linear speed. At a certain point in this particular question, you need to calculate angular speed. So, what I did at the beginning here is I converted fifteen rotations per minute, which is angular speed, it's just not the unit we usually use for it. So, I converted here fifteen rotations per minute into one point five seven rad per second. So, that is omega. That is the angular speed. And note that the question doesn't give any different angular speed. The implication that I'm trying to make here is that it remains the same. So, if you try to plug those into here, if it's remaining at the same angular speed, final angular speed would be one point five seven and the initial would also be one point five seven. So, you get zero. Question?
Can you explain why then centripetal acceleration?
That's a good question. Centripetal acceleration and angular acceleration describe different things. Angular acceleration is how much is its rotational speed changing? So, is it remaining at fifteen rotations per minute based entirely in the angular headspace? What centripetal acceleration means is how much is its linear direction changing every single second? So, angularly, it remains the same. It goes through the same number of rotations every unit time. But linearly, if something is orbiting in a circle like this, its linear velocity is constantly changing direction the entire time. Remember how I was talking about the moon wants to move in a straight line and it keeps being yanked by gravity into a different direction?
Okay. So, centripotally, centripetal is going like, it's going four here, then four here, then four here, then four here.
Yeah. The, the object, or in this case, the kids, are always trying to move in a straight line, but whatever centripetal force is holding them to the merry-go-round is forcing them to keep changing direction. Their rotation remains constant, but their linear speed keeps changing. And that's what the centripetal acceleration is.
That's going straight up in, in basic different directions, but spinning at the same rate.
Yes. Spinning at the same rate, but the linear speed keeps changing direction. Technically, changing direction counts as linear acceleration. How you guys feel? Alright. Do you know if you have any questions for either this afternoon or Friday afternoon? Have a great day. Yes, as long as you're scheduled, I'll take it any day that I would offer. Just make sure that, note if you're planning on coming Friday, a lot of people tend to come Friday. The room's gonna be packed.